I talked to him weekly.
Call the town of Gaston's special, August 21st special meeting into session at 9:00 a.m. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call of officials, please.
Katina.
Present.
Brett.
Present.
Robert.
Present.
Okay, one of the guest speakers today is Tyler Blair from Sunrise.
We're waiting for air from Sunrise to show up.
Okay. Um, council, if you're okay with it, we'll just move on to the approval minutes and then come back once they're all here.
That's fine.
So, uh, regular meeting, August the 14th. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from August 14th, regular board meeting.
Second.
Motion with a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Brett.
Aye.
Robert.
Aye.
Katina.
Aye.
Now, make sure you're done with it. Okay.
Crazy drive up the sign that says, "In the window," is it there or you signed it?
You don't sign like you're right here or something?
I signed it.
Old business, um, council, I don't think we have any update on the wastewater, um, project. We don't have any update on the storm sewer or the nuisance ordinance amendment. So I would entertain a motion to keep those three on the table.
Make a motion to keep the wastewater, uh, storm, storm sewer project and the, uh, nuisance ordinance on the table.
Second.
Motion with a second.
Brett.
Aye.
Robert.
Aye.
Katina.
Aye. Okay, we have the 2026 fire contract for Gaston Fire Department. Seeing no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the fire protection agreement, um, for 2026 between the town of Gaston and Gaston Volunteer Fire Department.
Second.
Motion with a second, roll call, please.
Brett.
Aye.
Robert.
Aye.
Tina.
Aye. And Tracy wants scanned over to Andrew Story. Okay, the town's webpage and official emails, I'll let Tracy discuss that with the council.
Um, I had given three different, um, options. I know that we are coming up to the end of, with the one we have soon. But from what I understand, um, Maron had told me for $200 a month that he would keep us going until our others got up and running. So, um, I put them in order how I wanted them. I did call or email this, um, Immense Impact to see if they could get us the indiana.gov and I haven't heard back from her. But regardless, we're gonna have to do something to get moving forward.
Now, will the police department have their webpage separate like we have now with this? Or is it gonna be all one page?
I would have, well, we'd probably just put it on there and all one page. We'll just add it like we do now. They'll have to do their own.
But that's what I'm saying, is it, are we gonna have to pay?
I didn't ask her about them.
Okay.
I asked her about here. And so I would include their pictures or whatever they want because theirs was always ran separately.
Right.
So.
Our websites?
Our town page, yeah.
Are you trying to find somebody to build a new one or?
I have three different ones, quotes, yeah. Now, I would include the town, the police department on our page. But I don't know what they run on their page. I've never, um, seen it, actually.
Well, and then they can budget for it next year if they, my concern is their emails. They have to have the official emails.
And I keep trying to get ahold of IOT and I never get anywhere, so.
But you believe the $200 with CS4EM is for all of us like we have now, the police department and all of us?
Yes. That's what he told us that day. And that would keep us going just until we get.
Before we need to bring.
Mm-hmm, and from what I get, it's, it only takes them three or four days.
Will be new emails?
No, I asked her about the emails. I don't know about that yet. But to get our webpage going and all of our stuff that we need, it'll take them about three or four days.
Because in my research with the, um, grants, government grants and such, we have to have, you cannot use Yahoo and Gmail and all that. So, my main concern is making sure that we are continuing our current because it's supposed to end next week until we get the official so we don't have any issues and I need to restore.
For now and then, until we get it.
Right, and I need to, Brett and I have a lot of emails over a lot of years that we need to make sure that we've secured those emails. So, my recommendation would be the council vote on the webpage. And then, how long do you think we should extend the current to make sure that we're up and we got our emails?
Two months, Brian?
Yeah, I would give, I would give till October. And then we can go from that point. So then that way I can.
Have your time to get a stitch.
Get everything together.
Now, do we have to go into a contract with his company or can we do it month to month until?
I will ask her. I mean, I know this is what her yearly information is.
With Maron?
Oh, with Maron. He didn't say.
Okay, so we'll take it as it's a month to month thing and if you find out different, that we have to have a contract, then maybe we better call another special meeting. That way we can address it.
Or we can do it in September's meeting.
I just don't wanna lose my email next week.
Right.
Okay.
Can somebody, I don't know, somebody call now and ask him?
So this is the one you wanna go with? Okay. Council, we've got zero from the police department as far as, and we did talk about it at this month's meeting. So I would take the recommendation of the clerk.
So I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the, um, webpage agreement with Immense Impact LLC. The amount of $1,236. And.
I would do those motions separately if it was.
Second.
Motion with the second, roll call, please.
Brett.
Aye.
Robert.
Aye. How are you?
Katina.
Aye. Okay, and now, um, for the discussion we had pertaining to extending, um, paying for the, um, for two additional months.
With C4SEM.
Yes, for the emails and the webpage.
I'll make a motion to, uh, extend our, um, service with C4SEM at a rate of $200 per month through the month of October to maintain our current webpage and our emails until everything's been imported.
Second.
Motion with the second, roll call.
Robert.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Katina.
Aye. And we have a water adjustment that was tabled at this month's meeting for account number 30068002. The purpose for the table was for the repair receipt. And we have a letter that's dated August 18th from the town of Ga, to the town of Gaston. To whom it may concern, the above Oxley Softwater customer called us out to see why the water softener was making the water bill increase. It was found that the water was running to the drain continuously. This was a malfunction of the unit, not the homeowner using more water than usual. Uh, Ms. Hanner has replaced the old water softener with a new one on eight, 18, 2025. So council, if you find that sufficient as a repair, with that one.
Who is that letter from, the actual company?
Oxley.
Oxley.
Efficient.
So I make a motion to approve leak adjustment for account 30068002.
Second.
Motion with the second, roll call, please.
Brett.
Aye.
Robert.
Aye.
Katina.
Aye. The only other thing I have on old business was a quote from, I believe, J.D. Stinson Communication.
I mean, here's my, if this is gonna work and keep working fairly well, right at the moment, then I would just hold off on that.
Well, I was gonna ask you, um, are your, this is what Carl's allowing you to use?
Mm-hmm.
So we can hold off on that, okay? So, council, I'd entertain a motion to keep that on the table.
Uh, make a motion to leave J.D. Stinson's communication estimate on the table.
Second.
Motion with the second.
Brett.
Aye.
Katina.
Aye.
Robert.
Aye.
Tracy, do you have any other old business?
Uh, the only thing I have is the one for the, um, computers for the police department.
Okay, we have, we approved that, so we're just waiting to pay the bill.
Did they get them both or no?
Mr. Barber in there?
I just wanna get this all verified.
Carl, we, um, received from your deputy for the computer. It says two at the top, but then it says $2,053.96 with $102.64 for shipping and handling for a total of $2,156.60. Is that for both of them?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm pretty sure, did you get the same one or get a different one? Or is it because it was refurbished? You wanna look at this? Because I was under the understanding that one was gonna be $2,000. That was my question to you earlier.
That's the same one I had.
Right, but that's not what that says. Cause we had, the quote I had originally was for $2,000 for one, roughly $2,000. And then we talked about getting two because we thought we could use the opioid money. But we're finding out that we can't.
Possibly.
So.
I'll find out.
Okay. So we'll pay this at, can we pay this at the September meeting or do you need, okay? So, the only thing I see different here is the word refurbished. Um, I'm not a big fan of that. I mean, some are. Um, so if you can find out and let us know if that's one or two. And then, uh, before you buy that second one, verify, I don't wanna take $4,000 out of your fuel. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have anything else in old business?
Um, the sign.
Okay, that's in new business.
Okay.
So, rather than go to new business, is everyone here?
Yep.
We'll go ahead and turn the floor over to Sunrise County. Whichever one wants to.
So, did everybody see this, the review, the prints that I had sent?
I got him, but my, it's very small print, so I'll listen to him. Well.
Yeah, so.
Okay, then he sent the KMBZ for Google Earth as well.
Well, she got hers this way and I got mine really small, so we'll listen to the presentation and go from there.
Um, Jeff, you go ahead.
Uh, it's same business as usual to build through the town. And, uh, whoever we passed by were able to pick up. But the additional homes, we would have to do, be able to do serviceability requests to see if it's something that's wanted because of so many providers being in the area. So, uh, it's just the request to continue to build as what we were permitted to build from the, uh, original prints.
So Jeff, if I'm looking at these correctly and I, yeah, I had to, I had to do a whole lot of. So it looks like that coming in from the north, you're basically coming up to this corner here and stopping?
No, uh, well, there's two. So because of how large it was, I, we had to split it into what we call two different OLTs.
Okay.
So it actually, it's almost like a cross through the town from north to south of your main road and east to west of your main road.
Okay, so it does go on up, it does go on up here to Elm Street.
Yeah, it goes all the way down and all the way across.
Okay. Cause that was.
And we pick up every home that we pass by.
Okay, cause that would, cause what I was seeing didn't, didn't go on up to Elm Street on the one map.
Yeah, because we, like I said, we broke them up into two separate OLTs. So they're two separate, different builds and technically to us.
So everybody on Sycamore and everybody on Elm has access to.
Yeah, I believe it's completely north and south through the main and all the way east and west of the main, if my, uh, memory serves correct.
And are you guys feeding all the way to the school or?
The school is part of it, so, um, I'm not really sure. They do, they do, uh, our engineers do kinda as the crow flies with drops and that isn't always how that works. So we might have to build the additional road. I don't know the name that kinda has the little curve up to the school. And then if we were to build that to get to the school, we would pick up those additional homes as well.
Yes.
Like I said, my bosses are, you know, are interested in doing additional add-ons. It would just, they would wanna see that there's an actual want for us to be there. Um, because there's so many providers now in the area.
So we think. Nobody's advertising to sell the product yet.
Really? Have you Comcast that?
Nope.
Nope.
Cause I, I mean, you can see right here, it looks.
Bad lines going on the ground.
And that's my concern.
I mean, if, if we're wanted, we'll definitely build it. That's, it's more of a concern that you don't wanna spend this X amount of dollars and then you get like one customer.
Well, that was gonna be my question is, you know, how many other additional people need it for you to want to provide it?
Um, I don't know the exact process. I do know it's a case by case. So as someone calls in, so like, we will have signs out that says that we are coming, we are here. Um, people can call in, they'll look and say, okay, well, you're not on our approved address list, but we'll send somebody out to do a serviceability. What they'll look at is, are they close enough to get within the, the, uh, fiber that's already there? Or do we need to do an add-on? And if they do an add-on, I would have to look to see what that process is. I don't know if they kinda go around the neighborhood to see if the, the same thought is there with everybody else in the area. I think my boss's biggest concerns was that Comcast has already been through here. And, you know, when you're, you're, now you're splitting up how many people you could have as consumers. Um, and if they're already pre-established, then that even lessens the amount of consumers you're gonna have because a lot of people don't wanna switch back and forth all the time.
Well, right now, it's the first come, first served, I think.
Right.
Whoever gets there first.
We didn't know how long they've been established here or not, you know?
They just started.
They just started their build. Um, so there's no service at all. Currently, AT&amp;T is the only, only provider.
Okay, is AT&amp;T a fiber provider? I'm sorry.
No, they're not.
That's non-construction supervisor, so they are not.
No, they are not a fiber, no.
So that, I mean, that changes a lot and I can take that back to my bosses. Uh, we would definitely would like to proceed forward to getting our infrastructure in, what we call backbone. And then we could easily build from there. Like I said, we thought that, I was under the understanding that Comcast was already up, running and established through the area.
So my neighbor called, um, like three days ago, he's wanting to switch providers. And he called Comcast because he knew they were coming to town. They told him, um, that they're gonna start making calls and start, everything's gonna go live next week. I don't know if that's true, but my neighbor told me that, what they told him, so.
Okay.
I don't know if that gives you any.
Well, they've been running, they've been running conduit.
Yeah.
And just yesterday, they started running actual fiber lines. So that's where they are in their process.
I mean, it's, we're just like anyone else. It's gonna be a competitive market, you know, and cost is a big factor, um, in, in the low income area. So that was my concern with, you know, getting prices, you know? Um, I roughly know what Xfinity is because my mother has it in Alexandria. But, um, until you guys were here, I've never even heard of your company before. So that, that's why I wanted some information out there. That way, let's say they do come in next week and then you guys come in and you're lower and these people are already locked into an agreement. You know, I felt it my duty of letting them know that, you know, hey, this is, you know, where you can go, this is where you can look for the cost. You know, you might wanna hold out and wait and see, you know, what any kind of promotional is that they have.
Yeah.
So with the, the project that we're building now is RDO. Okay, so it's a government-assisted, um, program, uh, originally orig, originated to provide, uh, areas with, um, either no service or underserved, um, internet base. And it pretty much COVID pushed it over the edge when people, uh, homeworking, kids were home doing school, so it kinda pushed the program over. But with the program we're in right now, RDO, we were, through census and reports that went through the state, um, we were pretty much given an address list. And that's where we build to. Um, we went through the bid process and, and got, uh, chosen to be able to build these areas. And so pretty much the outskirts of Gaston was the build. But to get from one end to the other, um, what they call is these areas through here, these addresses are called synergy capacities, which they allow us to pick. If we have to travel through an area to get from point A to point B to get another RDO area, but there's no subsidy to build out beyond that. So, but when the infrastructure in place, and like Jeff said, get a backbone in place, then we look at what we call market fill-ins. Uh, we call them MFIs, market fill-ins. So basically, we come in after we have infrastructure in place. Now it's much more feasible to be able to build out in that because if you're building, they, they break it down for cost per mile. So I worked for AT&amp;T for years and that's why the, the copper plant, you know, beyond the city limits, if you look, it's probably just falling apart because it's so expensive to build out when you only are passing one. You know, you're only passing five houses per mile. So, you know, so if you look at the, the cost to install that along with the cost of the maintenance, um, and so on and so forth, it, it's, you know, it's years and years before you even re, uh, recoup your investment, your upfront investment, let alone make a profit. And that's, you know, at the end of the day, that's what everybody's after. So, if we come through here now, it is much more feasible for our upper leadership to approve a market fill-in to come back in because we're already here. But to not be here in the first place and try to get approval to come back, now we have to build infrastructure back in. So the cost substantially goes up for us even bringing service in. So we have a lot of people out in rural areas that, you know, say, you know, we, we don't want you, you know, coming up our private lane. There's a few places where it's a private road, we'll come up, we have to get a right-of-way agreement. But what we tell them on the front side is, if we do it now, there's no obligation to connect or have our service, but it doesn't cost you anything for us to bring our service up, you know, a half a mile up your driveway. But if you decline it now and you decide in a year, like, oh, I want it now. Now the cost to get that construction done of that half-mile lane is now on you. So, right now with getting subsidies from the government, um, we're able to come through, get an infrastructure, get a, a backbone in place that gives us something to build off from, that we could get a market fill-in later approved. I, I, I can't guarantee that, but it makes it much more feasible to do that. So that's kinda, you know, the, the idea of coming through and only picking up, you know, basically your, your main roads at this time with a couple offshoots because the elementary school and there was a couple other addresses, I don't remember which, for some reason fell within the RDO address map. So we would have to branch off on a couple, just a couple side roads. Um, school makes sense, other ones didn't, but, uh, but that's, that's the government, so.
Well, that's really why I, I wanted you guys to come in and explain because even though we don't have people here, we have people watch from line. And I wanted to be able to answer to the public why you came in and did Sycamore and why you did Elm, you know, and it wasn't included. Because, um, we're just as needy as the rural area. Our internet service has been very poor. Um, we get a lot of complaints about it. And, you know, schools going technology, everything's going technology. She has issues with her stuff here, so that's, I wanted to be able to explain to the public why you were just doing the two main roads.
Yeah. And then I also don't believe we do contracts, so I don't think there's anything that ever locks anybody into a service for an extended period of time. It's usually more of like, I believe, a dish effect. So, as far as I'm aware, you know, there would nothing be locked them into us or another provider as far as I'm aware.
We might be a small community, but I do believe when the opportunity arises that people can get away from our current internet service, you will hear the town of Gaston quite a bit because it's, you know, we all have issues with it, so. You sent me a picture of orange filled tile that was damaged. Can you talk about that a little bit and educate me?
They put in a new splice box, I guess, what they call. And they never replace the tile.
Who's they?
Them or is it, okay?
I don't know who it is. I know it ain't the one that's doing Sycamore now.
Oh yeah, there's two crews for Comcast.
Rick B's place, he called yesterday.
Is that why he got dirt?
I don't know, but he called yesterday and said it had not been there like the day or two prior to.
Was that, was it your crew?
I would have, it was in town.
Yeah.
City limits.
Carl.
No, it's not, it's not Tyler's. There's two crews working for Comcast.
So we believe it.
One is Tyler and then one is, and they told me their name. Not this.
So it's not you guys, correct?
No. It's mud construction and somebody else.
And if it was us, we would get it repaired. And if it was us, we would get it repaired.
Yeah, they tore the, like, tile, all the pieces.
There's probably negative.
Are they in town now?
I haven't seen them.
If you wanna look and see if they're in town, I'd be glad to go with you after the meeting, and let's get it addressed. Just wanna make sure while they're all here.
No, no, they haven't touched anything in town, cause we've been waiting.
Yeah.
Well, that makes it easier to know who the, who the culprit is then.
Yeah, whoever put ours in.
Well, that's.
On Madison Street. Whoever was at your house and my house. It's that company.
No, I haven't, I haven't built anything in town.
No, you're good. Cause now we know who to talk to.
Appreciate addressing it right here.
When that Rick B called by, poor Carl, I said, get down there.
Carl, do you have any questions for them pertaining to this project? Ray? Entertained a motion that allow them to move forward.
I will make a motion to allow, uh, Spectrum and Sunrise Telecom, um, to move ahead with their project, um, connecting through town on Sycamore and Elm Street.
Second.
Motion with the second, walk on.
Brett?
Hi.
Robert?
Hi.
Tina?
Hi. I would recommend now that it is live, that if you have any kind of advertisement for the sales, I would share it here in the office. Um, that way, if the other company comes in next week and these people are in your range, then they can say, hey, I might wanna hold off and wait.
We did have the two roads just north here. I think it was the one that goes out to the water.
Mulberry.
That was on that.
You just wanna amend the.
Yeah, you guys mentioned Mulberry, McKinley.
Yeah, we might have to amend, like, the, the school, the road going towards the school to, so then that way we can actually properly service the school. And then there's a road to the east that's going towards, I think, I don't know what, what it is and how to plan.
I would just amend the ordinance to as their plans that they provided. I think all that's in the plans.
So I'm in, amend my or, my motion. Go back to bed. To allow Spectrum to, um, run per plans.
Sorry.
Motion with the second.
Brett?
Hi.
Robert?
Hi.
Katina?
Hi.
And I apologize if we held you guys up. You're here just in time, cause we're getting ready to start putting a price on our permitting. I just hope we don't get in a situation like back in the day when the cable companies all came in town. They had the big satellites and they put them all on everybody's houses, and they took off, and you got these big satellites and you don't have any service, so. And like I said, the public watches from home, so that they know you're coming and giving the opportunity to be in the competitive market.
Yeah, no, this is fiber to the home. It's gonna be more reliable than usually what's in the bigger cities. Because like I said, it's fiber all the way to the home.
Okay, yeah, I need that on Madison Street.
We need to start right here.
We have no service.
If we're not there, I do encourage people to call in.
I live on Elm Street.
Request a serviceability request. We will come out if it's something that we can reach to their home. They will, will add those, uh, ports to the fiber taps. If not, then that's when they'll look at, um, like you were saying, cost per passing time. And then I don't know if they go out and survey the, their surrounding area to see if there's other residents that are also wanting it. So then that way, it makes more financial sense to, you know, continue down the building. So it is something they're always looking at.
And then if I understood you correctly, it's not, it's internet TV and home phones?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to move downstairs somewhere.
I just want a reminder that Ray is the contact. He's the utility guy, and so.
And I'll grab a card from my truck and give everybody my card. And like I said, if they want, like, farm piles, if something happens, you can reach out to media tower, Aaron. We'll be out there, we'll come look at it, and we'll get it addressed.
And how long will this project take? How long?
Uh, we're talking about two, three weeks.
Depending on when we get the mid fact.
Any other questions, counsel? Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize that we had to extend it, but. Have a great day.
Later on.
Thank you.
Probably see you in the future, all right.
Okay, big, new business. I wanna talk about the sign. Ms. Oliver called me yesterday and had an idea. I don't know if it'll be feasible, but I do think it's worth looking at. Um, she knew a gentleman that did some work, um, for someone that she knew, and it was a reasonable price. And she wanted us to look into maybe potentially doing a sign out of brick. Um, but we'd have to get, and I think that would last longer. I'm not sure how much it'd cost. She was gonna get some contact information. So I, I mean, it's up to council. Tracy's got a sign. But like I said, I thought the brick might last longer if we can afford it. And if the council wanted to look into it.
John, I think it would look nicer.
I mean, I did find a newer one, and I have talked to Gary, but he said the best thing for me to do is go into his office now. So.
But they don't do anything brick, they just do the.
No, they do.
You wanna look into a cost there?
Yeah, they do. They have, they'll do whatever you need them to do. It's just how much money do you wanna spend?
You gotta do some, we all have to deal with it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think we need to look at different places. And, um, and then, uh, we'll also get ahold, um, of the contact that, that Vicky's got and see. I mean, if we had, the right thing is if we've had somebody that would donate their time and lived here in the community, was a brick mason, that kind of stuff. I don't know anybody, um, off the top of my head. But I do think that a brick one would look a lot nicer, and.
Yeah, like the one that I sent you from Fairmount, all of that is brick at the bottom.
Yeah.
And then there's a, now I can't talk, so I didn't get out and touch it, but I'm pretty sure. It's rot, like a wrought iron, and it says Fairmount on it. So I sent that to him, and he said, we can absolutely do that. I need to know your budget.
But what I, what I was thinking in.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we've been from one spectrum to the other, so we had an idea. We went to him, and it was way above our spectrum, so. And the other one was only like twenty-eight hundred dollars to three thousand dollars, so.
Well, I mean, I, I think if we, e- even if we went a little bit smaller and did, if we could do like all brick and it say Gaston, and then maybe some small thing, or just Gaston.
But only on one side, it doesn't say, things are coming to Gaston on one side.
Well, I know, cause it's only.
Yeah, I mean, like the one I seen just said Fairmount on it.
Yeah.
So like, it would be, if you're saying, we'll just say all brick, then it would just say Gaston in it. So, and I think it had lights on it.
To have space at each, at each end of town, but we don't have the property to do that, so.
Do you remember if that local masonry company's private?
Really?
Butler, I think it's Butler, Masonry. It's Matt and Brad.
Okay, I got a question. All of the brick type stuff that Stephanie had gotten donated to do something, but down at the park?
It's not like that.
I didn't know, I haven't seen any of it. I didn't know.
It's more for like.
Cause I know it's not been done, it's just sitting down to maintenance farm.
Yeah.
But I didn't know what.
For landscaping.
Oh, okay.
It's like I was a landscaper. That was a good idea, though.
Yeah, it's like, okay, I've not seen any of that, so.
The gentleman's name is Ronnie Creason. But I would be interested in getting a whole, if we have a local one. And to see, I mean, I think something, even if we go smaller because of the cost, and it says Gaston in a nice brick, is not only gonna be nicer, but I think it's gonna last longer. And then, you know.
But I know this guy's, okay, I'm just gonna put this out there. If they're a mason, they do the brick, but how are they gonna make the Gaston part?
Well, that's what we'll have to ask somebody that does that kind of work. If we have to do lettering or what we have to, you know, that's way out of mind.
Where you get the letters that you put into the brick. Is that what you're talking about?
They can do the brick structure and then have the thing made and drill.
Right, that's what I'm, that's probably what it is.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I mean, and I've talked to Gary, and he said they can do a, any sign of Muncie. They've done them all. You can go look on their website.
Well, I know we talked.
Done everything.
I know we talked about it the last meeting, um, using our edit money for the sidewalk. But I wouldn't be against using a little bit of that to put a really nice sign out there.
Well, I think that's where we had discussed taking that from anyway.
So you wanna work on that? You want, okay. I know you went, done a lot of work on different ones, and we keep throwing different ideas out there. But when Vicky brought that up yesterday, I thought, you know what? That's a really good idea, so.
Yeah. That's why I, um, sent that one for Fairmount, because it's all brick at the bottom. And they do that. They do whatever, and then they put the sign in it, so. But then, um, you're gonna want lights on it, so you'll have electrical down there too, so.
Well, then if they do the top, right, you might go go put your little planter down there and you plant some flowers down there.
So you're saying like Christmas.
Well, the one I showed you, it's, it's brick all the way around, and the inside of it is all flowers, just like kind of up here on the corner.
Right. And that's what I was thinking, match something like what's up there. Thank you, sir.
Did they mess it up on the front?
No, it's just so small. I write it bigger on the back. But yeah, if there's ever any issues, questions or anything, please reach out to me and.
Cause we've had trouble with people leaving and leaving holes in yards.
Anything, like, you know, damaged tiles, if there's an upset person, we'll, we'll come out, we'll talk to them. We'll see what their issue is and try to resolve it the best that we can.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, so Tracy will work on that, and if you need anything from us, then we can talk about it again, um, at, um, our September meeting.
Do you have like, any, you know, do you have like?
I don't have a clue. I have zero clue, cause I don't know what, I mean, I know, I know an LED sign, an LED sign is thirty-some thousand dollars.
Yes, so that's way out of our.
Right, but that, but I don't have any idea what, what an all-brick sign would cost to even go off of to give him a budget.
Could you show him one from Muncie? Take a picture of it, since they did it, like, how much did this one cost?
Well, he does, but I mean, we've been doing back and forth for a year now, but.
Well, I also like Ray's idea of getting a whole of the local.
I just sent that to you all.
Cause if we can keep business here in our community, that's our number one priority. And then, um, and then maybe, you know, talk to Vicky, cause she, I don't know the gentleman. And, and let's, you'll get some ideas of individuals, you know, that would do it. It may be way out, but rather, and I know we've been talking about it for a long time, but like I said, I think that, uh, we wanted the sign for information. We now found out that's way out of our league. So now let's look at long-term, and you know, if we have to spend a little bit more money and we're not having to replace it, you know? Anything else on the sign? There's no need to take any motion on that until Tracy, um, gets some more ideas. And I apologize that we've been all over the spectrum with that, but, um, I didn't even really think about brick, and I thought, man, that would be really cool. That would be nice, so. Okay, um, we got a message yesterday that our street truck has some issues. Do we have any details on that?
Uh, not yet. Um, I'll get some today, though.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, the truck is not safe to drive, so the employee has been directed not to drive it.
Yeah, rusted out brake lines. So we're getting, working on an estimate on that. Um, he told me he was getting one yesterday. I just haven't got, I haven't got the information yet.
Is there anything that, cause, um, sounds like there might be a situation where we may or may not fix it and just replace? Um, is there anything in his daily job duties that's gonna be hindered while the truck's down?
Probably, especially now that, you know, summer's coming to an end, we'll be doing leaves, the, I mean, salting after that. Not yet, but will soon.
Um, well, we obviously can't salt in the police truck, but if he would need to move something, Carl, you could move it for him?
What about the?
Well, we've got, we've still got the big truck too.
So that'll do what he needs?
Yeah, but it's not ideal, but yes.
I mean, none of, none of it's.
Yeah, it'll work for, for a period of time, yeah.
What about the, the other one, the other truck? Is it used at the sewage plant?
You mean SUV?
Yeah.
I don't think we're talking SUV, but.
Well, I think he's not, well, I think, um.
The sewage plant?
I mean, uh, it would be suitable for what Ben does.
No.
Okay. Well, I just didn't know, you know, if he's out mowing leaves or whatever, you want him to.
What's your reason?
Or not leave streets and stuff.
She's talking about an SUV, not a pickup.
Oh, no.
Okay.
The one down.
We were talking, we were, she was talking about pickup trucks.
So if he needs to haul anything, that he doesn't need to get the big truck out, you'll move it for him? As long as you don't damage the police truck and don't put stuff in the police truck that shouldn't be in it, right?
So we're, we'll look and see what that's gonna cost. Also, it does have other issues with rust, not just the brake line. So if it's too much, maybe you can start looking at estimates or something.
Well, I would have estimates for them. I mean, I would go ahead and get estimates for a new truck.
Okay, start with that, then.
I mean, that way, that way you've got something, we've got something to compare.
Yeah.
You know, do we, do we go to the expense of putting money, putting money into the current truck? Or is it a waste of money and we need to, to buy a new truck? I mean, we're gonna need to know what, what cost comparison we're looking at.
Okay. I'll get on it.
And with.
I know Ben talked to me, and he, he doesn't really feel the need that if we go with another truck, that we get one with the dump head, since we have the big truck with the dump head.
So I'll take some cost.
Yeah, that's what he said.
My only thing is, is Carl's talked about selling the big one.
Right.
Well, the big one's running right now and working.
Like Ben told me, he said.
We go plow snow.
As long as it can have a snowplow on it, it'll make it work. Cause he said you can't get everywhere with a big truck.
Well, no, you can't. And I mean, but at the same time, I don't see the point in half assing.
No.
Like, just getting a pickup truck just because it can have a snowplow on it. And it can't do any of the other things that we need it to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would think unless it's a major cost saver, that we go with what we currently have.
Do we, would we do one that just has like utility boxes, maybe? Like the one we used to have?
Just utility crap?
I don't know.
I mean, it's all, it's, it's all, I mean, it's all possibility, I mean.
When it comes to street patching and stuff, it's a lot of you get a cold patch, a hot patch out of a small truck.
Right.
Then it is the big dump.
That I'm, yeah. I mean, we don't do the job, so.
We're not gonna wanna.
Do you want me to have a meeting with Carl and Ben?
Put a patch in, in the back of a pickup truck. Right.
But what are we doing with selling the old police car and the tobacco? Uh, we need to bring some revenue in to buy this equipment. We've been talking about it for several months now.
Well, Tracy, you showed that picture of the car.
Or may or may not, but you have the information now for the.
I got the information from now. I got great pictures, cause I had them weedy completely around it. So I got pictures of tobacco, um, where you can see everything, and I got the information.
Well, I mean.
I just don't know how we can go out selling it to you.
Tracy, uh, we do that, we're, have to do the bid process, right? So, I mean, council has already voted to follow the state protocol to sell that stuff, and we need to sell, you need to bring some revenue, and we, we have talked about this several times. So let's, do you need anything from the council to get those sold?
Private car information.
Okay.
Do you need anything else from us? I mean, we voted, I mean, we have to.
I've just been waiting on the information, so I can get it out in the newspapers, so.
Right, I mean, I know that it's not you. I'm just trying to get it sold. So we can bring that revenue in and put it back in to a truck or whatever it is you're gonna need to buy.
Yeah.
Cause we can sit here and talk about it all day, but we know our NVH is gonna hold, so.
I got the information.
Well, I mean, a truck would utilize the whole town, so it's not like NVH is the sole proprietor to.
But it's going into the streets, and if it's not going to water and sewage, I'm not, personally myself, I'm not willing to take the money out of water and sewage unless we absolutely have no money in the budget to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, cause it does do your stone for the water and sewer, and it does do all that stuff for the streets.
But we also are getting ready to raise our utility rates, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, it's going to be something that I would take from every fund we have, so I would split it between and take it by quarters or, because every department uses it.
Well, first let's look and let's get this sold.
I disagree with that because they're driving an old rundown Blazer or Explorer from the police department.
Yeah, it stays in.
Right, so we probably got to get something for utilities soon.
Right.
Regardless of that, now that we got the information, get quotes.
So here's my question. Do we want to look at buying fleet?
That's an option because they're going to need something in the utility sector.
Yeah.
So do we want to look at buying fleet or leasing?
I'm not going to say yea or nay on the leasing. I am not a fan of leasing.
I know, but I mean.
And I don't know a lot about it when it comes to the municipality sector.
Right.
I just know as a consumer, it's people like myself who drive a lot and the regulations and the restrictions.
So I need to check on fleet purchase.
I mean, you might want to look at a lease too. These guys might say it's okay for the small town and the municipality. Somebody like myself that drives five hundred miles a week, that's not even something I look at.
Right.
So let the department heads look at it, but they need a vehicle also.
That's true.
So I would need to check with every dealer about fleet purchases. Who am I going to check? Am I going to go to?
I don't know.
Well, you can buy.
Well, I know like Newcastle bought.
On the state bid contract.
State big contract.
I don't know.
I don't even have that.
And then I think we bought the.
Well, it's a good conversation.
On a lease to purchase. Deal, you know, it wasn't a standard lease, it was just a, just a, I think it was a five year lease and then it was ours. Like a, like a finance deal, but I think.
That was years ago though, right? Yeah.
I think Ray could help you on that. The only department that does not need it, police department does not need any more vehicles.
Okay.
We're just going to sell one of them.
Get with Ben, Robert, because I think he's already been online looking.
No, we don't want to do online looking.
We're just on the route, we're, let's get these sold, get a little money.
There's a place down in Spice Land that does utility vehicles that, all the time. And they're always decently priced.
I mean, Ray has been a blessing to the town where he's drove his own personal vehicle all these years and stuff. But he's eventually going to retire for the second time. And I don't expect employees to drive their, I expect them to drive their personal vehicle to work. But when they're at work, I expect them to be able to have the town vehicle to use. I mean, I wouldn't want to drive my vehicle sewer on my job all day long.
You want magnets to tie the car?
So talk to Ray and find out what, you know, he would need for his department and find us the best deal. And then we got to figure out how we're going to pay for it, but we got to sell some of this other stuff.
Yeah, that's for sure. That's why I've been trying to get the information, I finally got it.
Okay, so did we get the lawnmower fixed?
Just took the lawnmower.
Lawnmower's fixed, okay.
I don't have anything else unless you guys have anything new or if I missed anything in old business.
I will follow up with you guys when I fill town.
Appreciate that, sir.
But it's aggravating. We've got water problems, water standing and people coming down and cut our fill tiles and.
Well, and you need to address those right away because we've seen on different projects that we've done over the years that when they get, they come in, they get the work done and they get out. And then it's hard to get them back here to fix things, so if you see something, address it.
Most contractors will work with you, but some of them go by the standing rule that if it wasn't marked, it's on the. Yeah, but how the hell would you mark the fill town? It's showing you that.
So the crew that was down there, last time I saw them, they were on Elm Street.
Right, but they're not here today or yesterday.
Are they done?
I don't know that they're done because they're all working out in the country too.
Yeah, they're moving back to the.
Well, and I think when we get the ordinance that Tracy sent over, that'll help us too with the contact stuff, you know. So, but until then you need to pay attention and stay up, don't wait for us. You know your job. Address it and then say, hey, you know, I had to talk to so and so and this is what needs to be done or call me or whoever. And just don't say, well, I'm going to wait and talk to the council. They'll be in another state by then, so address it.
I just got seventeen more locates for the northeast quadrant of town last night. So.
Well, it'd be nice to have. I'll be interested in seeing what the cost is offered to the town as far as, you know, as, I mean, we obviously need new internet, but we don't want to make a decision till we see what both of them are offering, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but Spectrum said they were bringing TV, television options too.
All of them are, both of them are Comcast.
Comcast is too.
Yeah, they have TV, phone and a lot of people don't have landlines anymore, but some do. So is there anything else that you guys need us to do before the September meeting? Well, I appreciate all of you.
I had a meeting on Tuesday with the ECI RPD. And they adopted a new comprehensive economic development strategy. I forwarded that out to you at that meeting. Mr. Walters let me know that it sounds like the county's moving ahead with the sidewalk plans to the Dollar General. So we'll want to be ready to connect with that, but he would be, he'd be in contact with us.
Yes, yep. As we mentioned in this month's meeting, that's where I think we'll have to do our edit money.
Yeah.
With our NVH.
Yeah.
You got anything, Mr. Holland?
I'm just sending you guys all the tobacco stuff.
If there's no other business to address, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn at nine, six PM, AM.
Motion with the second.
Brett?
Hi.
Robert?
Hi.
Katina?
Hi.